You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening, I'd like to open up this Monday, February 8th, 2016, regular Fayetteville City Council meeting and call it to order. Ask my good friend Johnny Hunter from Cliftdale Community Church to come up to the podium. Pastor Hunter, if you would lead us in a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain up here at the podium so you can tell us something about your ministry.
Certainly.
If everybody'd please rise.
Feel free to join me in this prayer as I pray the way I pray and you pray in the manner that you pray. Almighty God, please bless this mayor, this city council, and the staff of this local governing body to address the matters that are going to be placed before them in a civil matter. Bless them with knowledge so they have all the facts and the truth. Bless them with wisdom to make decisions that will ensure the citizens of Fayetteville experience peace and prosperity. Bless the youth of this city to know their purpose in this life, to value their health and strength, to set goals for academic achievement, and to appreciate their teachers. Have mercy on the young and old alike when we fail. Inspire those who stand and reach out to help others. Let nothing be done this night that will bring shame to this city. Let much be done that will bring honor. In the name of Jesus I pray, amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Hunter, tell us something about your ministry and your church.
I'm the pastor, Dr. Johnny Hunter. The pastor worship of Cliftdale Community Church, it's always an honor to be with y'all tonight. And we are a church that's multi-racial, multicultural. The senior pastor is Maurice Barnett, we have a lot of military people, very non-traditional church, nondenominational, because every church got their little glitches that they like to believe. But we are kind of a church that if most people really don't fit in a regular church, we're probably the church they could come to. The music is a good temporary style and everything, and they were missing with black gospel and some everything else. But it's a joy, it's a church that's, it's a lot of fun.
That's great, and give us the address, where are you?
Oh, 7763 Cliftdale Road. This is the church that's sitting on the hill, the new sanctuary up there that this wonderful city helped us get in spitting and everything, especially with the help of the mayor, making sure everything was going smooth.
Thank you sir.
We appreciate you so much.
We appreciate you, thank you Pastor Hunter.
Amen.
Good to see you my friend.
Yes, good to be seeing you brother.
Next thing on the agenda is a special recognition and introduction by the city manager, Mr. Voorhees.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce to you our new CFO Cheryl Spivey, come on up Cheryl. Cheryl has extensive local government experience, including with the town of Cary, with Wake County, and also with the Cape Fear Public Utilities Authority. She also is a former staff member of the Local Government Commission, has been in the private sector, in the audit field, and we are certainly excited to have her here. And while Ms. Smith is irreplaceable, she is going to move on and retire next month, and we're excited to have somebody with Cheryl's excellent qualifications to make the difficult attempt to fill Lisa's shoes. But I think Cheryl's got what it takes to do right by us and move us forward, and so it gives me a great, great deal of pleasure to introduce you to Cheryl.
Welcome Ms. Spivey, you're very photogenic on the television.
Thank you, thank you. I'm very excited about being here, very, very, very proud that the city of Fayetteville is trusting your purse to me, and I will do everything I can to fill Lisa's shoes. But I know, I know that that will be extremely hard to do, but I'm excited to be here.
Ms. Spivey, are you from Durham?
I'm not from Durham.
That's an inside joke.
I know, I know.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
That is with the exception of 6.06, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I think we'll address that when we hit the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Alright, so we have a first and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Okay, and that's unanimous from those present? Mr. Coleman. 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Crisp.
If I may, I move to approve the consent agenda with three exceptions.
Okay, sir.
First of all, item 6.06 is a part of my motion, that item I wish to remove completely from the agenda. Item 6.09, I wish to pull that and refer it back to our 22 February council session. And item 6.010, I wish to pull that and refer it back to our 22 February council session. March, 6.09, yes, March.
So that's approval of the consent agenda with three exceptions. One is to completely remove 6.06 from the agenda. 6.09 be referred to the March work session, and 6.010 to come back at the February 22nd regular city council meeting.
That is my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDougal. Council discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. That is eight to one with Councilmember Hirst voting against.
Was that motion to approve or just?
No, 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 no. Public forum is next, getting my verbiage out. The public forum is a time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, each speaker will be limited to only three minutes. So with three speakers tonight, I can do that math, we'll have a nine-minute public forum. It is to address issues that are related to the city and the city council only. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may appear later on in the agenda at the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that time. When you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. And when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time is expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we cannot extend that time. Madam Clerk?
Now, we have three people signed up. The first one is Ms. Jeanette Gillespie.
Ms. Gillespie?
Our next speaker is Mr. Raymond Welton. Mr. Raymond Welton.
Mr. Welton. Call the next speaker.
Okay, our final speaker is Mr. Eronimi Mohammed Iman.
Mr. Mohammed. Good to see you, you can tell us about your invitation?
In the name of God, the beneficent, the merciful, all praises due to God. We will not take 30 minutes, so don't worry. Okay, I am Eronimi Mohammed, the founder of Fayetteville's Muslim community here since 1971, with four Fayette State University students, so-called Black Power student leaders when I got back from Vietnam. And we were very honored to establish the first masjid, brand-new, in the whole state of North Carolina, in Fayetteville, before Charlotte, Raleigh, etc. 2700 Merkison Road. I'd like to mention also that it's a great opportunity, it's a great thrill, believe it or not, like Marvin Lucas told me. He said, "You're running for the senate, campaign in the rain." Yes, I'm running for the senate. He said, "Campaign in the rain and people will love you." So mine is on the internet, y'all. Next on the agenda, we'd like to bring before you, we're very pleased with the, Mr. Gibson, the great job that he's doing. He needs more funding to pick up the leads throughout the city. We want to make sure that the African-American community, particularly Broaddale and Wilmington Road, definitely get the leads picked up a little bit earlier. We do not want Haymont Hill to get theirs done in a way that looks like we're being neglected. The other thing we want to bring to your attention is, is the growth of Fort Bragg, Brack, or Forcecom, we're very pleased with that. We want everyone in this area of Fayetteville, Rayford, Leamington, Lonberg, etc. to know that Brack, Forcecom is thriving. Four new, brand-new schools, that's part of my work, some of y'all didn't know that. But four new schools, the professional basketball player Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, who grew up in Fayetteville, went to East Smith High School. That's right. He came and gave his approval and thank you very much to this community about three years ago. And that's a part of the positive growth and development by closing down the military bases in Georgia and bringing those military bases and the offices and families and relatives to Fort Bragg. One of the reasons we pushed that so hard, some of y'all may not be aware, was because we came to the city council and it came out in a meeting, it came out in a meeting, that the corporations who were doing most of the construction of Fort Bragg, architects, etc., they were not paying taxes. So the Lieutenant Governor's Office of North Carolina, the state legislative black caucus, my team, that's my team, some of y'all may not be aware of that. But the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus, Dan Blue and others, that's the team who helped me do most of this work that you hear me talking about. But God has been the one who's made these great things happen that you will see on the internet. It's not me. It's, I'm just a face in the place. And most of this has been documented.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Okay, I don't get the 30 minutes.
Next time. Madam Clerk, let's call those first two folks again.
Ms. Jeanette Gillespie.
It's Ms. Gillespie in the house.
And Mr. Raymond Welton.
Mr. Welton. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now hear from our friend Randy Hume. Welcome, Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the purpose of the public hearing, I'll just make a very brief presentation. Do we have? Anyway, the purpose of our changes is to make sure that we make a smooth transition to our new transit center in downtown, and to make sure that all of our, all of our streets in downtown that we do cover now are also covered by those changes. Because no longer will all of our buses be traversing from east, from west to east to get to the transit center, because we are moving about a mile to the west. The proposed changes do that, and they also give us some opportunities in some other parts of our system to make some improvements that we think will be very good for the convenience of our customers. This one, it just shows the coverage of downtown, and again, you can see that this, all the streets are covered by the different routes, although many of them are now moving from, from east to west. One of the big changes and one that we've been working on for some time, Route 14, which is a very, very heavily-used route, that route now uses two buses and takes an hour to go from downtown to the mall. It really is about a 40, 45-minute trip, but because if we did it that way, we wouldn't match up with anything, this move to the west side with a little bit of streamlining allows us to make some changes that will allow us to make that trip in a half-hour and match up with other buses. This is the proposed Route 14, which was used one bus, it's 30 minutes each way, a 60-minute round trip, and would continue to have a 60-minute frequency, just like we do today. Route 16, this would be the new route that we would create with the other bus, and this would allow us to now provide continuous coverage along Bragg Boulevard from downtown all the way to Skybow. But it also picks up that important, important location around the Utah Shopping Center area, which we now cover by the Route 14. Route 7, again, is a route that we've had for some time. This route now terminates on Rayford Road at Ireland Drive. Our TDP all along had planned that we would extend that route, add a bus and extend that route to the new VA Center on out to the Gillis Hill, Cliftdale, and Rayford shopping area. And so that is what the new Route 7 would do, and in doing this, we would eliminate the Route 32, which is that special shuttle that now runs just to the VA Center during certain times. Another route that we were looking to make some changes and improvements on is our Route 4. Our Route 4 does go, is a heavily-used route, it has two buses on it, operating at a 30-minute frequency, and it does serve DSS. It would continue to serve DSS, but this route would allow us to provide two-way service along Rosehill Road between that and University Estates. And at University Estates, it would connect with three other routes plus the Spring Lake Shuttle. Route 10, because, Route 10 is known as our Strickland Bridge Road Route, because we would have Route 7 if this was approved going along Rayford Road, there's no longer to have Route 10 also serving Rayford Road. So we're proposing to take that to Cross Creek Mall, and that allows us to make some other changes. And that, I think that would have a really good improve, or be a significant improvement to Route 10 because it'd give it a stronger destination. Route 15 currently is a route that goes between the mall and the, and the hospital area, the medical center area. This route has some schedule problems currently at times because of congestion on Skybow. And so by using the Route 10 on Skybow, we are proposing to use the new Glensford Drive to go straight down Glensford to Hope Mills Road and over to the, over to the medical center. And this would help with some, some of our schedule difficulties on that. Route 30 is the PWC shuttle, right now it just goes from our transit center to PWC, it does serve some of the Hope 6 area. It would continue to do that, but we would like to still operate the same frequency we do now, but it would be a, it would really serve also as a downtown circulator and connect with many of the destinations, the library, the post office, and other places in downtown, the courthouse and others. We've had 55 people that registered for our public meetings that we've held so far, that does not include those that logged in in our, in our Facebook meeting. We have had, most of those agree, we had 30 people actually filled out surveys that gave an opinion of these changes. 23 of those said that they approved of the changes and liked those. We had seven that gave some point of disapproval, that most of them didn't give a reason for that. The ones that did give us was just the transfer center should stay where it is and doesn't need to move. The other one was Route 7 and 15, but didn't really give us a reason why. And then the one that we would like to make a small change to what was, what we originally proposed is on Route 8, and that's just to serve the Hope 6 developments over along, over along Campbell Avenue that we do serve now. We had proposed just to come down Gillespie. We do not have enough time in that route to serve it two ways, but Route 30 would serve that, but we're proposing that we would make a right-hand turn on Campbell, go by there, and then come back up to Russell and go over to the transfer center. We had a lot of other comments, some, I just, I won't read all of those. Again, at the top of the list has been Sunday service, the one I will mention, we had a couple people that were really interested in whether or not we're going to serve the new Walmart on Gillespie Street, and we will, we are prepared to make that change. In fact, Walmart has built us a bus stop there. And with that, would turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, we'll go to Councilmember Crisp.
Mr. Hume, these changes will be effective in the fall when the transfer center opens?
That's correct.
Next question, I saw on there and I think I'm right, on Route 14 you eliminated the Utah place, but I think you picked up Utah place with Route 16, is that right?
That's correct.
Third and final, about two, three years ago, I asked you why they weren't numbered Route 1 through 6, 5, 4, and you explained, would you please send that email again to council? Because I'm not sure everybody on council understands.
Yes, I will.
Why we have Route 1 and a Route 30 and a Route 4 and so forth. Send that out again to us, please.
Yes.
Thank you. There's some method to that madness.
Interesting. Got some of the right.
Mr. Hume, thank you for your report. In there you, you mentioned Campbell, Campbell Terrace, or the new Dogwood Manor, and Oak Run is the new name for the Hope 6 project. Did you say that there was a bus route going through there, or that was not agreed upon?
As proposed, we did have a bus route going through there, the downtown circulator, Route 30, but we are proposing to go ahead, because Route 8 serves all of Campbell Avenue. And we will, we can do that on the inbound trip and still serve that, and so it'll take them to the transfer center.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
And generally, loops in the middle of the route is not one of my favorites, because it requires people to ride a long way to get back to where they're going. This one is close enough to the end of the line at the transfer center that I don't think it's a major inconvenience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Mr. Deviere.
Mr. Hume, thank you, just two quick questions. One, you mentioned a plan for the new Walmart, can you, can you talk a little bit about what that's going to look like?
We are planning on serving that with our Route 31, and it's a minor enough change, it doesn't require a public hearing by our policy. Route 31 is the one we introduced that serves the Enterprise Avenue area, goes along Owen Drive over to the hospital. We really are not carrying anyone directly to the two stops we have at the Crown Center. We do have a stop at the DMV that we are, that is, does have pretty good ridership. And so we would like to turn south on 301, go down to the Walmart, come back up by DMV, and then come, come back in and pick up the regular route. And we're set to do that, we've posted notices to do that when the store opens on the 9th of March.
That was my question, and Walmart's agreed to?
I'm sorry.
Walmart's agreed to pay for the shelter?
Yes, I met with them, this is a little bit slipped, slipped through a little bit because of where it was located and whether or not it was city limits, in the city limits or not. After verifying annexation with them, and their development plans actually included a bus stop. So they've already built the bus pad, and so we'll be able to install a bench of shelter there.
So when the Walmart opens, we'll have bus access for the people that are working out there and now have jobs out there?
Yes, sir, we will.
Second question, you talked a little bit about, or there was discussion about Sunday service, has, has that been discussed and explored, and where are we on that?
It is in our TDP, it's, as it sits right now, it's our, sort of our next step, which I generally think is probably about two years after these changes, is when we would want to make those changes. You know, there's a lot of overhead to do with Sunday, but there is, that's where we are getting a lot of requests, and so that is a, probably about a five or six route system that we would operate on Sunday from somewhere around 9:00 in the morning to about 6:00 or 7:00 at night.
Do you have any preliminary information on that, just stuff that you've done, what it would look like?
I can send that to you, yes.
Or council, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Deviere, Mr. Hirst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Route 15, Rayford Road to Campground, I agree with you on Glensford, there was no stops along Skybow?
Yeah.
And then what, what is, what picks up those stops that were on Skybow that you transferred along Glensford?
We would, we would have the Route 7 that would be operating all the way along Rayford Road, really from Robinson all the way out to Road, really from Robinson all the way out to Clifdale Road. We'll have a bus route.
No, I'm talking about Sky Bow.
Oh, on Sky, our Route 10.
Route 10?
The route that serves Strickland Bridge Road. It would, it would come up, come up Rayford Road, make a left on Sky Bow, go straight up to the mall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, three questions, and I think you might have almost answered one. Utah, is that bus going down into shopping center or in the housing area?
That bus basically goes behind the shopping center. We loop behind the shopping center, and we have a set of sheltered stops just to the, I'm going to say to the north of the Carlyse on Elm Street.
Yeah, I guess when you say behind the shopping center is where I'm confused. Is it, you know, between the two shopping places, like there's a skating rink there and the post office? Is it in between those two?
It's between the skating rink and the main shopping center building.
Okay. One question about Glensford with the traffic circles, well, two questions really about Glensford. Number one is the traffic circles, you know, there's about two or three of them in there. You know, the buses are fairly large. Will they be able to matriculate that without any problems?
Yes, they are, they're built, so we can.
You've tried them already?
Yes, sir.
And secondly, of course, is about Glensford, is the neighborhood noise. You know, one of the comments, one of the criticisms I get right now, and I keep telling them it's temporary, the bus that comes down Dan Ridge and a couple of streets in there, I don't understand air brakes, you know, and I get this comment, 5:30 in the morning, they're being woken up by, you know, by air brakes. I don't know, I didn't know air brakes make that much noise, but, you know, apparently they do, because, you know, I get a lot of comments about the buses coming down through there. So my thought is, are we going to have the same problems on Glensford, seeing it'll be more of a permanent fix, where hopefully Dan Ridge and Phil, y'all, that is temporary, I believe, isn't it? I've been telling everybody it's temporary.
Well, eventually, we plan to go in Yankin Road Gate, yes, yes. On that route. On Glensford, of course, we met with the Montclair community probably about two years ago, when we actually were creating Route 10, we met with them. We were planning on going through, they wanted us to stay on Glensford and not cut through, actually, I guess, Montclair Street. And so I think this is one that they told us that they felt would serve their community but not disrupt their community.
Long as they have.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal, Mr. Wright.
Yes, I missed a question before, but I wanted to come back, and can you go back to the overlay of Rayford Road going into the new VA? My question is, I've had a lot of citizens talk about the Riley Road going into Rim Road that comes down to McDonald's and Clifdale there. There's a, you know, there's about a one-mile, two, maybe two-mile, two to three-mile gap that people coming out of the South Gate area and adjacent neighborhoods have to walk all the way down to Clifdale or all the way up to Rayford Road to get the bus from that area. Is there anything considered to ease that, that piece of property there?
We're working on, yes, we're working on a stop with engineering infrastructure for the Chilton-Raycondah intersection, which would be much closer to the South Gate neighborhood. Right now, we would go Rayford Road, we would go into the VA Center, come out of the VA Center, and then continue on to the Navy Federal Credit Union out at, actually, Two Bells Lane, just off Rayford Road. So it would, it would provide a closer connection than we have now. Right now, the closest connection is actually Route 17, which comes down Rim Road and then turns on Old Gillis Hill, I think.
Okay, so it comes down Rim Road near the lake, off of Rayford Road?
On Rim Road. The Route 17 comes down Rim Road, makes a right, I think it's on Old, I think it's Old Gillis Hill Road, and then it goes over to Rayford Road, cuts that corner.
Okay, well, I'm not satisfied with that answer. I'm looking at the Riley Road piece. That is, that's the piece that's giving a lot of people the headaches. So if you can, I mean, thank you for what you're doing, you're doing a great job, but I need you to look at that a little bit closer when it comes to those having to walk two miles or mile and a half to get to the bus stop from that particular area. If we could, if we could do something to kind of ease that up, that'd make me real happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Seeing no further questions, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
No, we have no speakers for this item.
Then we'll close the public hearing. Council, I'll go to you for action. Mr. Colvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hume, for that presentation. I think you're doing a great job expanding our transit service. I hope that these new routes, I didn't ask you tonight, would have accommodations as far as benches and shelters for our customers as they venture off into this. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we accept the presentation of the Transit Department. We consider any public comments that were made and approve the route changes as proposed by Mr. Hume.
Seconded by Mr. Wright. Questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.